Call the roll. Present.
Ellen Smith.
Present.
Ben Forster.
Present.
Emily Pratt is not present.
We have approval of the minutes, petition twenty-four P C seventy-five for April one of twenty-four. Everyone should have received that. Any additions or corrections? Motion to approve.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion's carried. Under old business, continued discussion on accessory dwelling units for discussion only. I don't think we got any additional information from anybody on that. You said some. Laura, that was mainly on the tiny homes, wasn't it?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. Any, any other additional discussion that we need?
No, in reviewing the notes from last month's meeting, it looks like I'm going to be working on drafting language for accessory dwelling units for your review, and I just have not had time to do that yet. So that will be forthcoming.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? We'll then defer that to the next meeting. Discussion only on the tiny homes presentation.
I thought it might be easier to see if you guys had any further questions from the information that I sent.
The only thing I had, and I think we might have covered it, but I wasn't completely clear. Let's suppose we provide an ordinance for tiny home of maximum of, say, four hundred square feet. And two years later, the owner decides that they want to double the size of that from four to eight hundred. Given the lot dimensions and things, is that going to be possible?
It should. I believe right now our minimum square footage is eight hundred square.
Okay.
And I think it will depend on where we decide to allow the tiny homes. If it's in a district that will allow that type of expansion, then, then yes. I don't, how would you build onto a tiny home though?
Stick another one on it? No, I'm just kidding. So another thing that I don't know how it didn't end up in my notes, and I apologize, I'd have to go back and find the county, but they actually did away with square footage requirements entirely. So that they wouldn't have, they wouldn't have, you know, this ordinance, this ordinance, this ordinance, they just did, I mean, that's just another thing, and I, and I apologize, I was looking through my notes and I don't know why it's not on there, but where they just went ahead and did away with square footage requirements entirely, just to simplify the process, because then you also do still have a period of space between four hundred and eight hundred, and so that's another, that's another thought, but I don't know how everybody would feel about that either.
Was this, was this in Illinois?
Yes. All the information, yeah, I have kept as far as specific, county specific, I have kept it all within Illinois. Yes.
So did you have anything you wish to add?
Um, I think.
We already have.
Um, I think most of what I was in the, um, the email that I had sent you. You know, as far, I know that there were questions about financing, you know, and that would, it would depend on how it's built. Um, as far as traditional loans, a lot of that would be stick built, if it's, but there are companies that, that deal specifically in manufactured type housing, so it's just one of those where there's so many, so many variables and so many different ways that it could go, that it could happen, that it's hard to, to nail down, you know, any kind of really specific answer for that. But I do know that, um, with stick built, they, they should, I never, you know, you never speak in absolutes with real estate, um, be able to use traditional financing for it.
Okay.
And traditional financing being?
As long as it meets requirements, it could do, they could do rural F H A, depending on how it's built.
Minimum requirement on a rural six hundred square feet.
They're starting to make, there are starting to do some exceptions along the way, but again, it's when I talked to the loan officer, she really just said they take it case by case.
Okay, because I, I looked at all of them, like the Freddie Mac and
Okay.
Rural Development, F H A. Yeah. Seems, seems like most of them are either six hundred or four hundred square feet minimum.
Right. Okay.
So we're looking at an ordinance that's two to four hundred square feet. So they either got to max out to get a, seems like they either have to max out to get a mortgage or traditional financing.
Okay.
Or not at all, in the case of rural development.
Which is just one option.
Um, I know I asked the question at the last meeting about, it seems the discussion went two different ways. We, it was approached from housing affordability and also as a lifestyle choice. Looking, one of the questions I asked was population, what has it done over the last forty years or whatever? Did you research that at all?
Population as far as?
Population only.
No, I missed that. I apologize.
Okay.
Okay.
I did. It's declined. Just a second here. Using census data, twenty year, two thousand to twenty twenty-two, we've had a six point two percent population decrease. Got another one up here. Uh, nineteen eighty to twenty twenty-two, that's forty years that I had discussed. It's seven point one, so, you know, it's seems to be our population is getting older, because that's also in the statistics, it had breakdown of, of age demographics. So I don't know where that would fit into our discussion, but it seems relevant.
Yeah. And I mean, it's significant number of older residents also want to downsize and eliminate repairs and those kind of things in their residence, so.
But, but does that downsize into a tiny home, or does that downsize into a?
That's the question.
Yeah.
At this point, it doesn't, uh, because there aren't any.
Right.
So, but you see, um, on the north side of Dixon, Autumn Wood, duplexes and
Sure.
And all the others, so it's, it's pretty common to do that, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not denying townhomes and that lifestyle are, are fitting, that's, that's also, you know, comes with an H O A where somebody's shoveling your walk, somebody's mowing your snow.
Yeah.
Mowing your lawn, doing your landscaping, you got your mini deck, you know, that doesn't seem to be the case with this.
Yeah, I don't know how. It's, yeah. But I think it's, it'd be considered. Okay.
I mean.
Anything else?
No, I don't have anything else.
Are we to a point where we would look at an ordinance?
I still struggle.
The necessity in the first place.
I, I struggle with the necessity, at least definitely in the Ag District or, or the R one District. R two's questionable.
Okay.
Is there interest in tiny buildings?
I'm not sure how to, to be honest, I'm not sure how to get, I'm not, aside from asking people that come in, I don't know that it's ever really been addressed as far as the county. I don't know that we've had.
Yeah, our office wouldn't have a way to quantify that other than by the calls that we've gotten, and we have gotten a few. We still have the R three district, which is compatible for this type of use. And I'm pretty sure at this point in time that it would be allowed in that district. The only thing I think the issue would be is the square footage. So that would be the only thing I think we would have to tweak to get it to, into that district. But that's typically where you're going to find your mobile home. You can also find single family home or duplex style home. So it's kind of your, your mixed use. And we, but the only thing with that is that we have limited our three zone properties in the county, so.
I apologize if this was discussed before. I don't remember, did any of the cities in Lee County allow tiny homes?
I think I mostly looked countywide, um, as far as not per se, yeah, I didn't really look city specific, so these county ordinances that I brought, I did go mostly county because we're looking as a county, so I can look, try to look by city.
I just.
But I just went by, I just went by county because.
It's rap balls, looking into it.
I'd have to find out.
Okay.
I really just, I really just looked at county, I did not look at city. Would there be any, what, I am curious what your guys' thoughts, and I'm not suggesting, but I'm curious to do away with square footage requirement.
It's interesting. I, it had never occurred to me. What are the square, the square footage of, of manufactured mobile homes have to be pretty small, I would guess.
A lot of them are not quite that small. You see like eight hundred, maybe eight hundred, nine hundred, depending in terms of it's single or double wide. Double wides, you can get, you can get some pretty good square footage. Single wides probably like eightish, I would say average hundred square feet.
So one of the things to consider though with square footage is, you know, we use square footage kind of in a way to protect property values and things of that nature. You know, we don't, I, I don't know if it would be in the best interest of the county to have a bunch of small homes that are not going to serve families, that are not going to be resellable, um, that may not be, you know, valuable enough to, you know, sustain the property values in an area, so that, that would be my concern with doing away with square footage altogether.
I agree.
I was just curious, because it was interesting when I read it. I just didn't know what everybody else's thoughts.
Which, which counties were the ones considering doing away with square footage?
I'd have to go back and find the county that's already done it. Um, like I said, I apologize, it's not on my report.
And there has been some of this going on in, in Illinois. They're doing away with like residential zoning districts and kind of opening it up to where you can have, um, you know, multifamily mixed in with single family and that. So we are seeing that occur a little bit across the state. I don't know if it's totally caught on yet, but I have heard it being discussed in our groups.
Is there any specific information still? City, let me see what cities are doing, not just counties, or?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
I, I don't see any value. We're talking about a county, county topic. So I, I find the city part of that irrelevant. I do agree with Alice's assessment on, um, maintaining property values. I mean, I remember early two thousands when I first started my hunt for my first house. There were certain areas of the counties that, you know, bankers didn't necessarily want to loan money on for a property, just due to location. You could, you could get a lot of houses out there for the money, but they were concerned about resale values. And I guess that's probably one of my hesitancies to just let's roll with it. You know, um, it's, it's a fairly, I would say it's a fairly recent phenomenon. You know, there's reality shows about them now. I think most of them are on wheels, not necessarily permanently cited. I'd like to see statistics of, which I know they can't be found yet, but I'd be interested to see them years down the road. How many people that when they jump into this lifestyle, think that's what they really want long term? And then after two years of bumping into their other housemates.
Yeah.
Or their family situations change, they, you know, they
Close quarters.
They, they meet a significant other, and I mean, and in preparation, I started watching those shows. Just to, just to see.
And do you think if, could you live in a tiny home?
Could I live in a tiny home? Long term, no. I would say one of the, for a brief period of time, like in a cabin situation, yeah, people do it all the time. As a permanent residence, no. You know, North Woods of Wisconsin, U P Michigan, that type of thing, out in the woods, yes. And that's why I was interested as to which county, um, because there are counties that are more suited to that camping lifestyle or, or getaway lifestyle, not necessarily permanently living there.
So in looking at the bulk regulations for the R three mixed residential district, they, that does require a minimum eight hundred square foot to build. So yes, if, if that is something we want to consider, um, we would have to amend the code to allow, what did you say?
Two to four hundred.
Two to four hundred. I guess down to two hundred then in the R three.
And do we necessarily want to go all the way down to, I mean, is there a justification for two hundred?
Um, it was just what was in the, it's just kind of, it just goes along with the I C C code. I think the maximum square footage is more, might be more, I'm, we're going to be new to building codes, so I can't speak to it.
Sure.
For sure. Those are just the ranges that are record, that are in the I C C building code.
Okay.
Um, so I'm not sure if we'd want to dip, I'm not sure if we'd want to line up completely with it, because that's what we're hoping to adopt. Or if we just want to do our own thing, I'm, I'm not sure how that would work once building codes are integrated. If we don't, if what we have in our ordinance doesn't match, I'm not sure how that, I'm, I don't know how that works. So I was mostly just going for easy transition if we do it.
And, um, while Lee County has not adopted building codes, it has been a discussion. However, the state has recently approved, it looks like some form of statewide building codes. It does look like as early as January one of twenty twenty-five, we're going to have to start enforcing some type of building code. So whether that's requiring a contractor in the build or homeowner to enter into a contract stating which code they're going to follow. They, they had a couple of different ways that we can, options for us to enforce, so that will be next year.
Okay. I mean, I'm, I'm more amenable to doing our own thing. Personally. Ten, ten foot by twenty foot, I realize that it's small. I mean, we're talking shipping containers, small and not the big ones.
Garden shed.
Yeah, which you're to cover with accessory dwelling units. I mean, it's small.
Yes.
The justification for that with, you know, taking care of well, septic, everything else, that's not going to be a cost savings. I mean, that's, it's going to be a high square footage, high cost per square foot.
Right.
Property. I mean, you have to bring utilities out there and pay for the installation of those. And like you stated, you know, resale value and protecting our property values, if we have a bunch of properties that nobody wants to buy or live in after the fact.
Would it be considerable for, um, special use? So it's not an across the board, like we were talking about maybe for A D U, would it be? I'm just throwing it out there.
Sure.
If it gets ta, I mean, if it gets tabled, if we don't have more time to pass and stuff, I understand, I just, my mind, that's how it goes. But would it be considered, would it be something maybe to be considered for, on Kate for special use? So like you said, it's not just a, a free for all of tiny homes. More thought?
I, I think that's a relevant consideration, you know, obviously there is some wooded property in Lee County, but, you know, tiny homes in the middle of cornfields don't seem to make a lot of sense. Because if they don't have room to put it inside, it gets stored outside.
And that's the thing, I, I think I would see these being popular in more of the recreational areas that we have of the county, you know, where people might have land where they hunt or something of that nature, where they just want something small that they can have some amenities while they're out there, so.
But are they going to go full well septic and everything else?
Right.
Or are they going to try and park a trailer?
Typically, if they're going to do all that, they're going to build a
Something nice.
Yeah, a pole building of some sort, so.
And I, I think we have to be careful moving too many things to special use.
I agree. Okay.
Sometimes then you lose the ability to actually consider special use because you did it last month. Or you did it two months ago, and so.
And then it gets used against you later.
Exactly.
Somebody feels their case.
I think there are some instances where it could work.
Don't say the chicken words.
So, um, it is my opinion that the best place for them as of right now would potentially be the R three district, um, assuming that we would amend the minimum square footage allowed for a home.
Agreed.
So, and if we did that, you wouldn't need to change any other qualifications under R three.
I'm going to have to dig into that to make sure that by lowering that square footage, we don't upset or inadvertently allow something that we don't want in that district, so.
I think we need to be careful.
Agreed.
Do you know where R three is?
R three is typically where you find mobile home parks. There are, there's actually couple of blocks in the Nelson area that are all R three. There isn't much, but you're typically going to find it like, um, O'Connell's has R three, or I'm sorry, Woodhaven is R three. Um, they have the mix of campers and park models and things of that nature. Those are typically the areas you're going to see the, the R three.
Woodhaven has a restriction on how many days a year you can live there too.
I believe so, yes. I think some homes they can, they're, they were grandfathered in maybe, but the majority of them, yeah.
Okay.
Good. Any other discussion on that? Parcel eighteen oh eight oh seven one oh two oh oh two. Discussion also?
So Emily had last time suggested, um, whether this would be appropriate to rezone to an R four, um, that's multifamily with there being four residences. It doesn't follow the intent of what would be allowed in an R four. R four is like multiple families living under one roof, not multiple individual houses is the intent that I was getting when I read through it. Um, so I don't think that is a solution for this property. Um, I'm just going to continue looking into it, and if I have further questions, I will bring it back to the board.
Okay. Anybody else have any comment on that?
On that parcel, um, two thousand and four, there were permits issued. Do we know what for?
Let me pull it up real quick. All right, uh, permits have been issued. Looks like they got two in two thousand and four, one in two thousand and twelve, one in twenty thirteen, and one in twenty fifteen. What? To go back to the discussion from last month, this property became noncompliant when we adopted our revised zoning ordinance in two thousand and five. When we adopted that code, it has a section in there that will allow for the continued use of noncompliant properties, but limits their ability to, um, further develop that property without first coming into compliance. So it has been the position of the previous administrators, zoning administrators to allow additional development to occur. The county more or less is kind of kicking the can down the road with this. At some point in time, somebody's going to have to deal with this issue and bring it into compliance. More or less, I was just trying to determine if now is the time or, or not. I, I I don't know, I don't know if it, I, I don't know what is appropriate, so I guess that's why I'm coming to you guys, so.
Okay. We'll let you continue your research.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Anything else on that petition? Under new business, petition number twenty-four P C seventy-six, petitioner Lee County Zoning Office has to text amendment to Title eleven subdivision flood control and stormwater management. I believe Laura's going to testify to that. Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God. I have a form for you to sign, if you would please. Yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
So there was, so this notice was published on May seventeen of two thousand and twenty-four regarding the hearing on this amendment. So if you guys have your packet, I don't know if it'd be easier if you just, if you guys looked at it as I went. So I guess it's technically the second page, the under definitions, adding in the definition of accessory structure and agricultural structure. Um, the reason that we're doing this is to bring the current ordinance more in line with, with N F I P regulations. There was just a few things in there that were recommended that we take care of.
Who recommended?
The state, when they did our visit.
All right, thank you.
So what we do is we had what's called a community action visit from the state. Um, they came down, they reviewed our ordinance, they reviewed our permitting process. Um, they went through the current list of violations that were hand, that I was given, things like that to start with the, to start with the floodplain management, to get that back in line. And in that time, she Yes.
What department of the state? Is it the E P A?
I D N R.
Okay.
I D N R, yes.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, it's okay. No, please do. They're the ones that, they're the ones that oversee the floodplains in Illinois, that make sure that you're up to. And one of the other reasons that we are working on this is that starting next year, right now, the state does our, does our community visit. Starting next year, FEMA themselves will start taking over, um, compliance visits. So we're trying to get as much, everything kind of lined up so that when that happens, it's as smooth sailing as possible.
Okay.
Okay, so adding in these definitions, so these definitions are all throughout the code and technically are applicable in this, in the flood ordinance. But it just kind of, it just
Sorry to interrupt. Is Paul able to pull up the?
Oh. The ordinance. Um. So when you get your copy, it's technically the second page on definitions where it's in red. So these are throughout the code, and what this is doing is it's bringing them specifically into the flood ordinance. the flood ordinance, just like I said, so everything's consolidated into one ordinance. It's the same definitions for accessory and agriculture that are throughout the ordinance. And then on the next page, um, under dev- under the definition of development, add in activities by other governmental agents, agencies, just because they do, even if it's a government agent working in the floodplain, they do still have to get everything permitted and approved. So this just puts the language to require that.
Okay.
Um, we did, we are taking out the routine maintenance of existing buildings and facilities. This kind of goes along with, um, what we're gonna come to next. So when it, so I'm, I'll dive more into it then, but it, what that does is it contradicts our substantial improvement, substantial damage language, because if you do enough, if there's enough maintenance that you do, it could bring you into that section, which is gonna make sense in a minute. But we took that out because it does contradict the next section we're gonna talk about.
Okay.
So if you keep turning till you find the next red, did not realize these weren't numbered. Oh, mine's not. So, so it would be if yours is numbered, it's page six, under substantial damage. So right now, in this, this, like I said, all this language is currently in the ordinance, we're just cleaning it up a little bit. So substantial damage and substantial improvement are very important, and they're very, they're enforced very a lot by FEMA, they're very important to them. If your house is damaged, you live in a floodplain, and the damage is fifty percent or more of the value of your home, assessed value, then you have to bring the entire structure into compliance. Same thing with substantial damage, if you're in the floodplain and it's damaged in any way, you get flood, fire, hail, tornado, however it's damaged, it's it's fifty percent or more of the assessed value, you have to bring the whole structure into compliance with the entire flood code. So as our ordinance sits right now, there's no limit on a time period. There's nothing that says how far we can go back, so we're adding in, um, the rolling ten-year period so that if like, let's say you did improvement in May of two thousand twenty-three, we would not count that in June of two thousand twenty-four. Cause as you know, doing anything to your home, that amount can add up quickly, so this just allows a way to spur people as they do stuff for it to fall off. And it matches up with the NFIP policies with after ten years, any claims that are made, they fall off as well. So we're just matching this up, and we're adding in, um, it is actually a measure of protection for residents that we can only look back on past ten, on the, on the rolling period of ten years for previous permits to add up the cumulative, either improvement or damage. That was a lot, I mean, do you guys have any questions about that one, or? Yes, so if you came in tomorrow for a permit in the floodplain, we would look back on the, on what you've done in the last ten years, we'd add up that total amount of permits. And if it is more than, it's fifty percent or more than the assessed value of your home, then your home, then you have to bring the whole thing into compliance. You can choose not to get your new permit, but, um, so it's a, we would look at the percentages and then go from there.
Okay.
Okay. Um, the next page, so this one, um, if they've received an official violation for, like, let's, on on your structure, then repairing that is not gonna be part of your substantial damage, your substantial improvement calculation. So again, that's just another, so if, so if the state is required, like if the county is requiring you to do something to your home and it's an official violation, that won't count towards your substantial damage or substantial improvement total. Then page eleven, if your pages are numbered. So this just, um, streamlines the ordinance by taking out all these requirements as far as thousand dollars, seventy square feet, twenty percent. It just cleans up the language and makes it much more streamlined as far as, um, substantial damage and substantial improvement goes. And then I think that actually might be, nope, there's one more section. Page fifteen. So if you look at number seven, um, for flood vents, the ordinance we currently have requires a flood vent on each wall, but we're taking it down to at least two walls, so you don't have to do each wall. If you can, if you can get the square footage coverage you need in your flood vents in just the two walls, then you just have to do the two walls, you don't have to do each wall. And then we also took out the language about the garage and shed. Um, it's very limiting as far as size goes for, um, for residents, so we're taking that, that requirement out. And then and then that is, that's all of it. Do you have any questions or thoughts on that?
These suggested changes, uh, are what brings us into compliance?
They, they line up, they were technically in compliance, these just line us up better, with, these are suggested changes to the ordinance.
Okay.
And like I said, there's, there's stuff in there that is actually, is good for the people, especially the rolling ten-year period. That's gonna be very important for people going forward.
Okay. Anybody have any question?
No.
The one part where they had an official violation, that official violation would be a violation coming from the county?
Um, any kind of official violation, it could be, um, like if it was their well and septic, if it was, um, it could be EPA, it could be zoning, it's any kind of official violation that that is written to them.
Okay. And the zoning office is asking us to approve the text amendment, forward it to the county?
Yes, um, actually, we're, this is the forum for the public hearing for the public, which is required under the statute. And so essentially, this, we're bringing this petition here to provide the forum for the public to come and speak on the issue, and then to get a recommendation from this board in either to approve or deny the petition.
Are we at the public hearing stage?
If the, um, comments and questions of the board has concluded, I would open it up to public testimony. If there is no public testimony, then I would go into public comment.
Okay. Any, any member of the board have any other question?
I do not.
I do.
You wish to comment? Okay, I need to have you.
Wait, testifying or?
Oh, this is just public comment, isn't it?
Well, are you, are you testif, are you presenting facts or evidence, or are you just providing public comment?
I would say it's public comment, uh, owners here.
Okay.
All of us do have property, uh, in a affected zone, Dutch landing, and we've been out there for years and years and years. Property itself, it was FEMA approved, grandfathered in, and essentially everything, not everything, but a lot of the material in here, we are violation. Yeah, how does that affect all of us when we were, this property is okay? And this, this
It was changed, doesn't add property to the floodplain.
So the, the flood code that we are amending, or the, the floodplain language, the portion of the code that we are seeking to amend under tonight's petition was adopted in two thousand five.
The property was purchased in two thousand three.
So.
Nineteen ninety-eight, in two thousand So.
So the purpose of tonight's hearing is to discuss the petition. So I would, I I would caution the board about getting away from that. Um, my office is willing to meet with anyone to discuss these matters. I do not feel tonight is the proper setting for that discussion. Um, this is a public hearing on a, on a proposed text amendment.
I would caution moving forward as, like I said, everything in here puts us in violation. So to our property, does that mean we have to spend thirty, forty thousand dollars to compliance it? Yeah, four months out of the year is about what we could use it. So that's why I, we caution with proceeding. Four out of thirteen lots.
So you only, you only use them partly?
It's a summer, yeah. Yep. Yeah. We built up? We get no services besides power that we pay for. There is phone line out there, but nobody, nobody uses the phone line because it's unusable, degraded, that's, those boxes have been flooded. Yes. It's just, uh, it's just a little hard to hear.
And now you tell us that those things are no longer valid.
The, the language with one unit per lot, I think we all, we all feel that that's a very touchy restricted area because if yep, family. Is new to essentially all of us.
So what specifically, what is your, what is your biggest problem with this now?
I'm, I'm not sure I'm understood.
Property and a flood.
That was approved by FEMA, and we have other campers and other storage units that were there.
And approved.
So I mean, we're all insured for our own campers and our own, but this document is saying you can only have one unit, that all of our septic and well systems and facilities have to be up above the hundred-year floodplain on stilts, which all of ours are underground, and that's what it was built, when it was built, back in, separated back in nineteen ninety-eight, when they was divided. So this whole document, I mean, if you go through it, we will be in violation of every size, I think our camper is on above a hundred.
Yes. Well, technically, it is a tiny home, it is four hundred square foot park model. That FEMA required the wheels to be removed, this document says wheels need to be on. Three times. And have been.
That's, that's what our problem. And all of our buildings out there, I mean, it's saying one camper per lot, or one building per lot, all these things, I mean, everything was
Which one, one camper, one unit on one acre? One unit on five acres, one unit on forty acres. What is an acceptable, realistic allowance? I think that's, that's kind of getting very restrictive. Two thousand eight, two thousand eight, this issue was brought up.
The people that are watching on Zoom or YouTube would not be able to hear you unless you speak on, into the mic.
Two thousand eight, I believe that was the year. We, uh, we, we had a zoning meeting like this, but it wasn't, it was just over us. And Tom Fassler was on the board, and he made the statement that the one unit per acreage, okay, let me rephrase that, one, one camper, one trailer, one building per size of the acre is not really what we want to do, because if you could have a hundred acres on your, on the river, you're only allowed one eight, one building or one camper per that statement. And then the, you can have a little twenty by forty acre, uh, lot there on the river, and you can have one, so what? It, it doesn't make sense, and at that time, he said they, when I left, I was under the impression they were gonna change that and get that straightened out, like for family members or whatever, you know, how many others they can have, but not a campground, not a trailer park or anything like that, just family, basically, that's what the issue was. I have three, I have my two sons and mine, and Roy's got his family there, Mike's got his family, just two, but, I mean, that's, that was supposed to, I, I just assumed that was gonna be taken care of way back when, cause Tom Fassler brought that up. Nope, then nobody ever brought it back up, we never heard anything again about it. Uh, I know he passed away, but I can't verify, you know, I, it's just my word now, but, no, I'm not very good at talking. Okay, now.
Now what? Do you guys have any?
I haven't got, I, this is the first I heard about, Mike just told me the date about this, so I really don't know much of what's going on here. I wanna read this and see, go through it myself. I have had, it just, first time I've seen it.
And the only reason that any of us are here, essentially, I heard about this firsthand, sitting in that chair. I would have had no idea. None of these owners would have had any idea that this decision was gonna get made. And if this would have came down the pipeline, by the way, you're all in violation. That would have been quite the shock. So I think, just take that into consideration too, that yes, things are put out to the public, but I think you can agree how many people show up. Probably not many. So it's, this is just very personal for us. It's our happy places. We all maintain even. Technically, the county is not responsible for even maintaining the road. But yet, we all pay over $2,000 a year in taxes for, for, for two usable acres. Well, the back part of the property has become swamp-like because of another issue, uh, another individual, another time, I guess. That is probably a health department concern. But it's.
I just don't understand, wha, wha, what's this meeting for? You, you said it's for a public. Are you just, is this proper time for us to be talking like this or not? That's what I'm trying to get through. I don't know what, I'm not into the politics in this.
So tonight is a public hearing on the proposed text amendment, which is that document that you were just received tonight.
Yes.
And so the comments, we're looking for feedback on what is being proposed in that document. So that you, you're correct, that this is, this is appropriate. So, um, if you want to talk specifically about your property, you can contact my office. So if you want to make general comments tonight relating to what we're, we've got in the proposed ordinance, then you can discuss that tonight.
Well, i- i- it's just kind of hard to throw a blanket over everything. I mean, we, we've been there and we can't, we only use it for four months out of the year. Because you, and when it does flood, we clean it up ourselves.
Nobody.
No, we don't ask for help. We don't ask for any money. I mean, I, I got stuff destroyed, I paid for it. I mean, it, it's my, it's my business, it's my deal. I'm not worried about FEMA giving me any money for anything. I don't want it.
We're the ones dragging the carps back.
Yeah.
Throwing the carps away, you know?
But I mean.
No, my concern is that we did contact, I'm, from what I have from the office and my comments that we did get back were not appropriate. I think in general, I mean, we were told that the state's going to take our property. We're in lots of violation. That's what our comment was. So I really don't feel that that office is a good place to come for our concerns. It is the board, unfortunately.
And that's fair, that the, the county board would be the, the appropriate board then, as, as you know.
Do you guys have any questions for us as being out there and being, well, I guess technically we are on the front line of this. So, yeah, have you guys ever been out?
I'm not sure where you're located.
When you're going out to White Oaks, it's Dutch landing, private drive on your left. It's.
About two miles, two miles away.
I think I know where.
A little bit further, there's that other subdivision.
And we're just a small part. Everyone that had a camper for our property.
There's 190 properties or so. Is that a rough estimate, ladies, uh, between Granditour and Dixon?
Um, I don't have it by location, but for the Lee County floodplain, it's approximately 1,600 addresses.
And that number is a very skewed number because technically FEMA at one point in time said the new courthouse was in a floodplain and then made the city spend a million dollars. Then later came back and said, we're sorry, you didn't need to do that. So floodplain is a very broad term. So it's, I think you can agree with that too.
So I think maybe I can help.
Go ahead.
Summarize.
Yeah.
So we already have a flood ordinance. And our purpose here is only the red highlighted item.
Unfortunately.
So this document already exists.
Yes.
Okay. So just making sure everyone's.
But again, how this document exists. Are we grandfathered in? Are we?
So you, I believe you had stated that you were grandfathered in and had recommendations.
We should have been grandfathered in.
Should have and have been.
Correct. And that's, those are two different things and, uh, you don't always get a straight answer.
Right. But you, you said you had a representative from FEMA out there?
She did when.
Okay.
16-ish years ago, just call it. And at that, well, prior to the revised, I mean, the prior document even, it was prior, FEMA was out prior to that. And we were compliant. So I, I don't know what else, I'm sorry. I'm not real good. Right. And unfortunately, the ball did get dropped for, in Lee County for a long time with some issues. And yes, we do have to play catch up. We have to fix things to get up to what the new standards are. If somebody wants to build a new property, by all means. But I can't think, if we were told we have to pick up our properties and our dwellings and move them to a non-flood zone, there is not a non-flood zone.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you need to take a kayak in, you take a kayak in and you check the property.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any discussion by the board?
I'm just going to take a moment to.
I'm sorry?
I said I'm going to take a moment to look at this after.
Well, I certainly understand the objections, but I'm not sure that the changes.
Are going to materially change the situation.
Right, thank you.
As I understand the objections, it's to the entire ordinance.
Yes.
Right.
And the fact that they have that issue, which has been there since 2005.
Right.
Earlier.
Yes.
I, uh, I concur.
Is the request of the zoning office to approve and forward to the county now? Or does it need to lay over for a month?
So if you guys, what you, if you make a recommendation to approve or deny, it will go to the county board. If they make a, they'll make a recommendation to table it for one month and then they would vote on it to approve or deny in July.
Motion to approve and forward?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Petition is approved. Anything else? Motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second.
Adjourn. Thank you all.